We'll let Alderman Marx take his seat. Good evening. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting. Tonight is Monday, January 26, 2015. My name is Dean Kilburg, third ward Alderman. I'll be chairing this evening's Committee of the Whole Meeting. I serve in the third ward with Mary Sino. Before we start, tonight there was a reception before our Committee of the Whole Meeting, held by the library, recognizing Esther Steele's contribution to the library district over the last 12 years. Esther's leaving the community and, first of all, we want to thank her for her 12 years of service and we want to congratulate her and wish her well as she leaves the community. So, a little information there for you to start. The consent agenda really only has one item. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from January? Before we start, let the record show that all Aldermen are present. The consent agenda has only one item, approval of the minutes from January 12, 2015. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into the -- pardon me. Oh, I thought I had them on.
Yeah, you've got to unclick the right one.
Oh, excuse me, sorry. Thank you. Items of business, item four, item A, the first item, recommend draft ordinance, annual rebate -- excuse me, abatements for 2014 tax levies. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Sino. Mr. Dahl, do you have anything to add as it relates to this agenda item? Good evening.
No, there's nothing to add. These are just the annual abatements of the water and/or electric bonds that are --
Okay. This toll's $2,284,697, the composite?
Yeah.
And the money for these abatements basically comes from the fees paid by the electric and water users, correct?
That's correct.
Any questions of Mr. Dahl? If not, I take it we're prepared to vote. Would you read the roll, please?
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Okay, carries 10 L. Okay, item 4B, recommend draft resolution authorizing 2014, '15 budget amendments as presented. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Sino. Mr. Dahl, anything to add as it relates to these budget amendments?
No, I tried to put as much information as I could in this one, just so everybody had an understanding of what we're trying to do. But if there's any questions, we have to answer them.
Are there some new funds that are technically being created here?
Yeah.
And that you're consolidating?
Yeah, that's correct. There was, through the audit last year, we conferred with the auditors and they felt it was better to move some funds out of the general fund and into their own separate funds. So this, we'd already passed the budget by then, so this is just kind of moving the budget into those funds to make things balance.
Thank you. I take it we're prepared to vote. Would you please read the roll?
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Carries 10 L. Item C, recommend approval of certificate of completion for Lincoln Square Public Utility roadway, curb gutter, and binder course.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Singer, seconded by Flanagan. He's right on the ball.
Yeah, he's up there already.
Mr. Babica, any questions as it relates to this agenda item? It's pretty self-explanatory. Alderman Brown?
Mr. Chairman, they're starting to build out there, is that correct?
Yes, sir. They've started their permit process for the model homes, I believe.
So this season we'll see some houses going up out there?
Well, they've actually just started construction of their model homes. I'm not aware if they've sold any or applied for any other permits for new construction.
At least they haven't been sold anymore. And the binder course will be there, basically, until a number of the homes are completed?
Correct. Once they meet, match the threshold for new construction with certificates of occupancy, then they'll put down the final surface. That way our roadway doesn't get beat up too quickly.
Good. Any further questions? Seeing now, I take it we're prepared to vote. Would you please read the roll?
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Thank you. Item D, recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of boundary agreement between the city of Geneva and the city of St. Charles. This is an extension of an agreement dating back to 1995 that expires this coming summer. Both city staffs have been meeting as it relates to this topic, and it's really no change from what has been in place. I'm sorry.
That's good. I have nothing to add. Just available to questions.
There will be a public hearing as it relates to this subject on February 2. There was a December notice as it relates to this hearing, I believe, that's been published.
Correct.
Anything else that you would like to add, Mr. Degroot? Any questions of Mr. Degroot? Alderman Brown?
I originally questioned this because I believe the boundary was drawn, went through one property, and since then I've had a chance to talk to the property owner, and indeed it's true, property owners pay taxes to both St. Charles and Geneva, but the line does go through the property, but I guess that's the way it will be.
Right.
Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Marx, seconded by Maladra. Sorry about that. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, I take it we're prepared to vote. Go ahead, Jean.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
10 L. Okay, 4E, recommend draft resolution authorizing repairs to well number nine pump and motor in an amount not to exceed $56,000 with Lane Christiansen. Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Simonian.
Second.
Seconded by Brown. Okay, we've got a, we've got some issues at pump nine, huh? Well nine?
Correct. Well nine, yeah. Just to, I got a little bit more information. Well nine is shallow well and it's located on Kestler, just west of the entrance to the water plant. So, the last time this well was, any rehab was done was 2004, so it is due. Unfortunately, we were gonna do it next budget season, but it just didn't last that long and, but the good news is it doesn't need any major repairs, it's just the bowl section. So, normal pitting and wear on that, so.
Any questions of Bob?
Okay.
It looks as though there's gonna be some improvements, too, in its function.
The well itself, we want to, yeah, we want to just bring it back to its original condition as far as the amount of gallons per minute that it will put out and back to where it originally was. So, we'll just do some sonar work through lane and some, possibly some baling at the bottom of the well.
Would anyone that's using that water from the well, would they detect any issues or any problems with it as it might be?
No, because all of our wells go straight to the water plant and then get treated from there.
So it's blended? Water from this gets blended with other?
Correct.
So there won't be a rust?
Goes through the reverse osmosis and same as our other wells.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I take it we're prepared.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Singer?
Thank you. Bob, is there any way in which you can assess the lifespan of that product?
Just by historical?
Yeah.
We're starting to see that the wells start, need to be rehabbed anywhere between seven to 10 years. So, I've, next year you'll see, I've got budgeted well number six, that was last updated in, rehabbed in 2008. So, we want to start going in between that timeframe of seven to 10 years. You can notice it by also your output that you have in the individual wells, and you can start to see if the motor's having problems or if there's encrustation around the bowl assembly itself, so. It's usually an indicator of if you have less production out of the well. But we didn't see all that much, you know, less production to move it up in a hurry for this year, so unfortunately, I mean, it was the check valve that ended up failing and causing noise problems, so it's not anything that we have to replace the motor on, it's the bowl section, so.
Okay. Well, thank you, Bob. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is a point of information. How many wells do we have in Geneva and is this the, would this be our newest well?
No. The newest wells were built at the same time the water plant were. We had two deep wells and one shallow well at that time that were built, so 2007, 2008 timeframe, so that we had two deep. Totally, we have three deep wells and four shallow wells.
Any other questions? If not, I take it we're prepared to vote. Jean, if you'd please read the roll.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
10 L. Okay, 4E, recommend draft resolution authorizing repairs to well number nine pump and motor in an amount not to exceed $56,000 with Lane Christiansen. Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Simonian, seconded by Marx. Okay. Mr. Degroot, if you'd bring us up to speed on item 4F, where we're at and what we're working on this evening here.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to kind of start with a brief overview of the project and update on where we're at and then open it up for questions. This property is the entire block of what is block two in the original town of Geneva. It's bounded by Stevens Street to the south, North Street to the north, First Street to the east, and the Second Street to the west. The proposal includes redeveloping the entire block to construct 30 townhome units. That would include demolition of the existing seven residential buildings on the block. The proposal includes two four-unit buildings, two five-unit buildings, and two six-unit buildings. All of these would face a public street. Access would be provided off of Stevens Street and North Street to the attached townhome garages that would be accessed by the interior of the block. The proposal includes 12 guest parking spaces that would also be located at the interior of the block. In order for this development to move forward, there are items of relief that would be required from the zoning ordinance, and that includes reducing the minimum street yard setback, increasing the maximum lot coverage, and increasing the maximum building height. In addition to that, the applicant's requesting a reduced amount for the required cash contribution to both the Park District and School District. The proposed contributions reflect what would be a credit that has been applied for the existing residential units that are proposed to be demolished to make way for the new 30 townhome units. The Plan Commission Public Hearing was held on December 11. I believe you've received minutes and transcripts from that public hearing. The Plan Commission made their findings a fact, and their recommendation on January 8, minutes from those, that meeting should also be included in your packet. The findings a fact are included in both the staff report and the draft ordinance that you've received. The Plan Commission unanimously recommended approval of both the request to amend the downtown master plan and to rezone the property. The request for the preliminary and final PUD approval was recommended for approval by a vote of eight to one, subject to the conditions included in the staff report. The one nay vote on that request was because they didn't agree with the credit being applied for the cash contribution in the School and Park District. And then just a final note, if the city council wishes to apply that credit, it needs to be passed by a majority, a two-thirds majority vote to apply the credit for the cash contribution. With that, I guess I'll open it up for questions. The applicants also here this evening to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. How many people are here to speak regarding this subject? Okay, several of you. Okay, the way we'll handle this is we're gonna allow the council to ask questions of Mr. Degroot or offer comment first, and then we'll give everyone that cares to speak in the audience an opportunity to speak at that time, okay? Okay, let's open it up for discussion. Alderman, Simonian, my Simonian, I believe, here first?
Thank you, Chairman. David, a couple of questions. On page 10 of 14 in the Plan Commission Report, it says a maximum lot coverage of 70.1% instead of 65%.
That's correct.
What are you defining as lot coverage?
Anything that's not landscaping or turf, so.
So the common area is not considered a lot?
So sidewalks, the buildings, permeable pavers count towards lot coverage?
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then, a little further on, it says several of the units are set back 17 to 19 feet from the property line. Do you know how many of the units are actually?
I'd have to review the site plan to get the exact number, but each one of the buildings that has four to six units, there's a variation in the setback from unit to unit. And that variation, some are within 10 feet of the property line, but then the next one might be six and the next one might be nine.
Okay.
Or, I mean, 19. So, there's some play in that elevation.
Lastly, on page 13, it said, one of the residents had an issue with headlights were a concern, and it mentions here perhaps the applicant could work with the homeowner to develop an off-site landscaping plan to shield the headlights. Do you know if the developer in that homeowner?
I don't know if that conversation's occurred. I don't believe that homeowner was at the last Plan Commission meeting. They were at the December 11 Plan Commission meeting, but I don't know if that conversations occurred.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
You'll have an opportunity to turn just a little bit, okay? Okay, thank you. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, it's been pretty busy in our ward here. The, a little background, the, I've been excited about this, the principles laid out in the downtown station area master plan in terms of density, and I've been excited to see development on that property. You know, things I am eager for there are the density.
Well, it's a little late for the meal.
I've been impressed in terms of the depth, the depth changes in the facade that, and I support the extension of that downtown station area master plan concept to include the entire block. I think a lot of the points that were brought up in the Plan Commission meeting were as thought, were addressed as thoughtfully as could be in terms of flow and perceived density. It may not address everyone's concern. All that being said, though, you know, I look at this project and, you know, I see a pretty significant diversion from our, the existing heights of the neighboring properties, pretty significant variance from the setback of neighboring properties despite the larger I'm troubled, as excited as I am about this project, I am troubled with the mass and scale abutting directly our historic district. That issue's gonna come up with other projects, too. You know, I am certainly not adverse to mass, but I think when we're looking for concessions from the developer, I could see height, I could see setback. Both was a little difficult thing for me to bite off. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would agree with much of, but like I said, I read through the packet that came to the Plan Commission. I must say, I disagreed with many of their findings, with findings of fact. I pass that area every morning on my way to work, and there is basically zero traffic from the seven structures that are there now, so that the idea there will be no traffic impact on this area, which is actually fairly heavily used, Stevens Street, it is our truck route, there are trucks there every morning, drivers have to be careful to back up and allow trucks to make that corner, et cetera. It's a very difficult intersection. So, I just completely disagree with what was in the findings of fact on that, it couldn't be more wrong in my estimation. I would have put both driveways emptying north onto North Street and not onto Stevens. As I say, trucks getting around that corner have an awful lot of trouble, and it's backed up quite often, cars have to back up to allow trucks by, et cetera. Have some nice sidewalks emptying out onto Stevens Street with a little landscaping for people who want to walk to town, but the cars could certainly go north onto North The height, I have a problem. I think that the structures could be lowered slightly. There's no reason why the basements, which are mostly just parking in these, can be a few feet underground. I know that might cost a few more dollars, but it certainly would make the massing of these a lot less if the overall buildings were lowered slightly. I would like to see more green space. I have a problem with the setback. I have a problem with providing so many parking spots as they have. They provided many more than are needed, according to our ordinances, and many more than I think will be needed based on who's gonna move in. I would have eliminated some of those around that center spot to make a little bit more green area. There's just, the 70% lot coverage is telling us something. There's just no green space there at all. I don't think we should be giving away that green space. I don't approve of the 70% lot coverage at all. Setback certainly bother me. The building height bothers me. I'm just worried that somehow we couldn't have had some inputs at a much earlier stage. The renderings that we see in the packet tonight have basically not changed since the initial submission, or do they look different? I tried to see it, I couldn't see a lot of difference.
The renderings have changed a little bit. The colors of the building materials have changed. The building height has been lowered by one foot since the last, the first Plan Commission submission. The gables at the ends of the buildings were also clipped to reduce the mass at the ends of the buildings, so there has been some slight modification to those elevations.
Still looks like a steep roof with a dark color that looks like a massive building to myself, and for energy considerations alone, I wouldn't put a black roof on a building that big, but. And I was part, as many were on this council, of approving the downtown plan, the master station plan, et cetera, and I really think the thought that was put into that of having the attached buildings along Route 31 and having single or semi-attached buildings on the west part of that, one and two residents' attached buildings, made a lot of sense at the time, and I still think it makes a lot of sense, so I find myself having trouble voting to change what we put in the plan. A lot of people in this city put a lot of thought into that plan, and it encompasses a lot of considerations, a lot of discussions we had about what we'd like to see on that property. So I have a problem with that. So at the moment, I find myself unable to, there's a lot of things in this. There's, you know, this motion is made up of three different parts which involve a lot of different things. I also have a slight problem with the land cache. I mean, this is a new development. We're taking a whole block and making it into the equivalent of a PUD, changing the zoning rules, et cetera. And to me, when you develop a whole new block, you're changing the impact. The impact today is almost zero. I see almost no traffic from that side. I see almost no people involved. I believe those rental units have almost zero impact on our town, and we're putting in 30 units of people that I hope will have a large impact on our town, and will take part in our Park District and our schools and everything else that we love about Geneva. So I have a problem with the land cache in this case. It's not a question of a single or a couple of buildings infill. This is, we're taking a whole block and making a PUD out of it. To me, that was what the land cache was invented for when we invented it, back many years ago when I was on the council, taking very large swaths of the city and changing their use into a much more dense usage. So I have problems with this ordinance at many different levels. I've only listed seven here, so I find myself unable to vote for it tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Okay, we'll go Flanagan and then, Don, we'll get to you then. Alderman Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I just go back to the headlights, because Alderman Simonian mentioned that it was put in the, it was up for discussion, and I was wondering if there was a resolution by, I thought the gentleman had his hand up. Was he the gentleman who, who property they were talking about?
The owner of the properties at the south, yes.
Yeah. So, instead of saying, "May we?", can we make that a stipulation, that that is a solution if the homeowner agrees to that?
It could be placed as a condition with the homeowner's consent.
Right. If that would be, I don't know if anybody would also agree with me, but I think that that would be something that we should look at. Instead of saying, "May", we should actually put it as a caveat so that the development, if it does pass, that is taken and addressed. Was there consideration ever made or discussed? Because I see that Stevens Street is about the only area that I can see that causes what I would see, would stipulate as transitional area. Of course, people aren't really concerned about the height next to a cemetery or next to a parking lot of the Park District, but I think, and on First Street, I agree with Alderman Brown, that those should be the height situation. But on Stevens, I was wondering if the developer at all took a look at it and basically lowered the height so that instead of doing that drastic change from one elevation to the next, from the single family to the, to the townhomes, that they look at redoing that transitional area.
For just the four units along Stevens Street, then?
Well, and I think the two that butt up against, right on the corners, too, of Second and North and First and Stevens. So it's basically that holds Stevens Street.
Stevens Street.
I know after the, after the original public hearing, there were some concepts to reduce building height for the buildings along North Second Street. As the site is, it slopes from west to east towards the river, so as it's proposed, it's really working with the existing grade of the property. I believe it's about seven feet of fall as you go from west to east across the property. There was an opportunity to lower the building heights along Second Street by doing some regressing, but you would also lose the front porches on those elevations.
Yeah, and I don't think that would be really ideal. I mean, the Second Street butts up against the cemetery. So it's really not impacting any neighbors, or those neighbors really don't care at this point.
And the regressing gets more challenging as you have the east-west oriented buildings to lower the building height.
So it can't be done, or it's not?
I'm not an engineer, so I won't say it can't be done. I'm sure anything can be done with the right amount of money.
Okay, and does it have enough drainage, et cetera? Does this development meet the standards of the engineering?
It has obtained preliminary engineering approval.
Okay. So that would be what I would suggest, of some sort of agreement so that it's not such a large transition. a large transition. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cummings?
There are a few things I like about the development. I certainly like the plan elevation, you know, the colors, the differences in the facade. I like the fact that the developer is trying to save some trees. I agree that it's a good area for increased density, according to the master plan, I think we're following that pretty well. And I think in the periphery of the downtown area, that it does call for increased density, so I like that. However, I think the problem with development isn't development itself, I think it's when development leapfrogs and is inconsistent in its progression, and I think that's what we have here. I think we're going to a larger project than can fit in the neighborhood right now. I think the buildings are too tall, I don't like the setback, I do like the green, I like the idea that they're doing an interior green space, but that has pushed the setback, that's pushed the buildings out, and we have less setback. I don't like the building coverage for this. I would like to see it small, and after reading the neighbors' letters, I can't speak for them, but I think they would be more, or less aggravated, I won't say more pleased, I think less aggravated if this project were brought down in scale somewhat. Over and over in the Plan Commission minutes, over and over again in the Plan Commission minutes, I read, "This is only a 5 percent increase in coverage, this is just a 10-foot difference in setback, this is just a..." And I added all those "justs" up, and what we end up with is a very different project than is maybe normally allowable. And I can't support that, and that's before even getting into the whole land cache thing. I can't support a project of this size because there are too many exceptions being asked for, and so I will vote against it.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Malauder?
I just want to address a couple of things. Don, you mentioned consistency, I agree with that, the world is changing, folks, the demand for housing, we've all participated in the Homes for a Changing Region thing, we've learned that the demand for housing going forward is different than what the demand for housing has been up to this point. We favor density downtown, and yet, density frightens us at the same time. I look at this, I agree, it's big, it's very big, so is the Marquette property, and nobody here really blinked at that. That property is near the historic district, that property butts a residential neighborhood, that property's height dwarfs the homes in the neighborhood, and yet, we're not concerned with that one. So when we talk about consistency, the fact is, housing is going to change in Geneva. We need to be consistent with how we see that change. That said, my concerns about Marquette were all about scale, and I have the same concerns We're Geneva, we're not Naperville, we're not even Wheaton, we're a small town, with a small downtown, and really big developments, I have concerns with how they fit in. The only other thing I want to point out is consistency with regard to the downtown master plan. As Alderman Simoni and I spent months reminding residents of the Fifth Ward, the downtown master plan is concepts, it's nothing cast in stone. So for those on the council who feel that the plan ought not to be changed or cannot be changed, that's inconsistent with the message that we were delivering to constituents a year ago. So as we move forward with any of this, we have to be careful about our consistency, we have to be careful with how we manage scale. And then the third consistency argument has to do with the land cache. I'm troubled when we talk about credits inconsistently, when we come up with reasons why a credit may or may not apply here, and a credit may or may not apply there, and the rules that we apply are not codified. That, to me, feels inconsistent. So what I look for as we continue to discuss this is consistency in those three areas. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll give you, anyone else that hasn't had a chance to speak yet would like to speak before Alderman Bruno, who has already spoken. Okay, Alderman Bruno?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to restate, too, you know, the city is, and planning in general, is really on top of, and recognizes the great value in high density near town centers, it's green, it's economically great. I am eager to vote for that density. You know, with Marquette, with Citron property, we haven't seen anything yet, we've seen some rough renderings, I haven't, I don't know what the latest has been to Plan Commission, and we don't have to trot that out here. I am concerned. I think we're all concerned. I don't think they're apples to apples quite, given Ace Hardware Plaza, but yeah, there's concern with all of it, but high density, I think we're, I'm all over that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, what we're going to do then is to give anyone that's attending this evening's meeting an opportunity to speak. And I want to thank you for taking the time to come to our meeting tonight and air your opinions, and your thoughts, your opinions are important to us in the decision-making process, and we want to give everyone an opportunity to be heard tonight. What we're going to do is, when you come to the podium, make sure you give your name, your address, and if you're a resident of Geneva, you have an opportunity to speak. Anyone that's not a resident of Geneva, we'll give you an opportunity at the end, okay? Let's try to be concise, to the point, you know, if you get over five minutes, then I might start encouraging you to wrap it up. And I think the way that we'll do it this evening is, we'll go by rows, we'll start on the left here, row one, two, three, four, and five, and then we'll work our way to the back, and then we'll start over on this side, row one, two, three, four, and five on this side of the room, okay? Is that fair with everyone? Okay, let's start then, row one on this side, do you care to speak? Anyone in row two? Anyone in row three? Okay, now if you just introduce yourself, and if you have a difficult last name, spell it for Jeannie, she appreciates that.
All right. Well, my name's Brandon Anderson, and I...
That's an easy one.
It's an easy one. It was an O-N, it's an O-N at the end. And I live at 328 North Second, so I'm at the corner of Second and Stevens, so we're kitty corner from the development. And I just want to start by saying, I'm so thankful and encouraged by your words tonight and by your thoughtfulness. As you look at this project, I will say that I had lost hope after the Planning Commission meetings and was a little defeated, and I'm just so thrilled to see that you've thought about this and listened to our opinions, and it just gives me great joy, so thank you very much. What our concern is, is that we are in the historic district there, and our neighbors have all gotten together, I'm kind of speaking for a large group of us, we've all gotten together to talk about this, and our Alderman were very gracious to meet with us in the last few weeks. We've worked very hard on restoring our homes in that neighborhood, on following the historic guidelines, my husband's repairing our windows one by one, and stripping them down to the original wood and re-ropeing them, and we want to be in Geneva forever. We love that idea that it's not Naperville, we've, all of us have really chosen Geneva for a particular reason, and we're grateful for what you've done to preserve that historic nature of our downtown. We are also very excited about the possibility of density in our downtown, we know that that is a value, we know that that might draw a grocery store at some point, we know that there is some demand for that kind of living, and we believe that the downtown master plan perfectly calls for that density along Route 31. The downtown master plan left the rest of the block as single-family homes that are not attached, and we would love to see it stay that way. We think that that would help to create that transition from the historic district and our homes to the density that would go along 31. We know that there is a high demand for single-family homes in the downtown area that don't require historic preservation, and that don't, a lot of people just can't take on the project of buying one of those smaller homes and tearing it down and building a new home there. But to have finished, beautiful, single-family homes, we have a list of neighbors who want to move into, right into our neighborhood, so we know, we could promise we could sell those for you right away. We, so we're just concerned about that, we would love to see it kept to what the downtown master plan calls for, the density along 31 and the single-family homes. We've got, as you, you know, as we've talked about, just the concern of density, it feels like a lot for that block, particularly with the height and the setback variances, you know, when you're standing at my front porch on Second and Stevens, like you mentioned, they're right there and they're high, right on the corner of Second and Stevens there. The way the land grades, it is seven foot, feet higher along Second Street than it is on 31, and so they will even appear higher, you know, from our corner as they go down to the river. So we are very concerned about that. The idea of a PUD, the Planned Urban Development, was a new concept to many of us who were at these meetings, and we felt like, looking at Geneva's ordinance describing what a PUD is, the ordinance says it's a privilege to be earned and not a right to be claimed, and that's a quote taken from the ordinance, and we have, we feel like we've been yet to show from the developer any reason why this designation should be granted. Geneva's existing zoning and the master plan already allow for responsible redevelopment of that block. So we also just are nervous that by granting a PUD, it sets a precedent for the Citron Building and Fourth Street School possibly down the road, that it's just a dangerous precedent to set. So we would like to see a PUD not granted for this. I think that's where I'll stop, I know people have other, you know, other things they want to talk about, but again, I just want to say I'm so thankful to see that you've read our concerns and looked at the plans, and we really appreciate that, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Okay, is there anyone else in the third row? Fourth row?
My name's a little bit more difficult to spell, Kurt Beier, and that's B-E-I-E-R, and I live at 124 Stevens, and I also own the adjacent lot at 116 Stevens. Pardon my voice, I have spasmodic dysphonia, so if anybody knows about that, you can look that up, too. But I was at that meeting, Mr. DeGroot, when the meeting with the Plan Commission, and he has yet to reach out to me and offer me any landscaping or anything like that. If you look at this, this entrance is, my house is really long, those of you who know the greenhouse with the red brick that kind of sat there for a while, that's where I live. And that entrance comes directly right out on my living room window, my kid's window, and basically the front of our house. So that concerns me. The height, I think everyone's concerned about the height, I think everyone's concerned about the density. The color, too, I thought that was kind of nice, you kind of mimic my color of my house, so they did change that, so I appreciate that. Historic, we're in the historic, as Brandon said, that we need to follow those strict guidelines, and that across the street, you can build this development and not have to abide by those guidelines. So we need some type of transition, or maybe keep it like the downtown master plan, you know, single-family homes and then multifamily in front, I think that would really make I like some of the Alderman's comments, height setbacks, setbacks, a 10-foot setback, and that 10-foot setback, and somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, is it from the sidewalk, or is it from the street?
It's a property line, so it would be, you know, the private side of the sidewalk.
Okay. So why are we doing that, right? The zoning says 20 foot, so why are we going 10? Is it necessary? Okay? It's necessary to get the height and the size of the building that he wants to have in there. And I think some of you are saying it's massive, it's big, it's inconsistent. I'd like to see a smaller scale. We're okay with development, we're okay with inf, I mean, not with infill, but with density. So let's just think about it and make sure it's right, you know? I'm going to live here a long time, and I see a lot of familiar faces, and you've been here a long time, too, and I want to make this my roots. So I really just, I would love to see a no vote this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beiers. Okay, is there anyone else in the fourth row? Anyone in the, I'm sorry, oh, is there anyone in the fifth row? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello, I'm Mary Zander, 121 Ford Street. Hello, everyone.
We have your letter, and we will put that into the public record as well.
Okay, good. So I just want to bring up a point or two from that letter, and the one point being that the open space in the proposed plan takes that space that is somewhat public, it's our area that we walk through on our way to Wheeler Park, and puts it in the inside, and it takes that then away from our use, not that we're on the property, but we are using that property as a visual space and a setback space. So I really do like the idea of keeping that in the public use arena. And I also think that, as was brought out, that with the developments that are going forward, it does seem as though each new one that comes along, it's, you know, there's another way to make it fill up that lot or get bigger or higher, and so it started with the condos, and we're all going to stay at that same elevation, and then you move that uphill, and then we're now at another elevation. So I think it would be good to keep in mind that when the condos were developed, that the idea was that the height of those condos were not going to be taller than the heights of our homes in the neighborhood. And so now that seems to have escalated to being the height of the condo on top of the hill that we already live on. So thank you all for your kind consideration, and those were the, oh, one more thing. There's a lot of residences there, and there's a lot of inside space, and not a lot of open space in that lot itself, and so all those kids that are there are going to need a place to play, and so we shouldn't shortchange our Park District when we think about those lots, so thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Anyone in the fourth row? Anyone else? Fifth row? Okay, this will bring us to the first row on this side, anyone?
Developer, I guess we'll answer questions afterwards.
You certainly will have that opportunity, if there's something that you'd like to say right now, you certainly are welcome to say it. The second row. Anyone? Third row? How about the fourth row?
John Bassett, two S's, two T's, 607 North First Street. It would be nice to see this block developed. However, I am very troubled by the three main variances. Each one bothers me. You walk around town, you can see how the houses line up at about the 20-foot setback, and I would certainly not like to see that decreased. As a former school board member, I really don't like to see the Park District As a former school board member, I really don't like to see the, the park district and the, and the school district shortchanged. I think, I think the issue is one of consistency and precedent for future development. You've got to do something that, that you can carry forward to, to other projects and have that consistency. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett. Okay, anyone else in the fourth row? The fifth row? Okay, come forward.
Good evening. Mark Groso, Seven Bridgeport Lane in Geneva. I'm also the president of the Board of Education for District 304 here in Geneva, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you for coming.
I'll be brief. Our concern at District 304 is the discount applied to the fees for this particular development. Well, it's $12,000 in our case. May seem like a small amount of money in the big picture, but for us, it's a, a whole classroom full of computers. I understand the formula, I've seen how the formula was applied, I don't necessarily agree with it, and I'm concerned about the precedent that this might set for future developments in Geneva. And believe me, the, the school district is all for development, getting some more folks in our community and helping out. I would say that, give an example, when we built Williamsburg School, those of us that have lived in Geneva, have been paying for Williamsburg School, and the, our debt for the infrastructure at the school, all the costs associated with it, has been laddered out so that as future developments came in, those folks can help shoulder the responsibility for that school and help pay the cost. And I think that it would be unfair to the homeowners, who are the majority of taxpayers in this community, to apply discounts to new developments and, and shortchange the homeowners who've been paying taxes these many years. As far as the homes that were existing in that area, I would say that back when they were built, those homes helped pay for Coltrap School, for example, and Coltrap School's no longer there. We have Williamsburg School, new development, this, this is a new development, the, the school was built 2006, we're still paying for it and will be paying for it, and I'd like to please ask all you to take that into consideration when you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're in the fifth row. Next.
Siobhan Lambalot, two L's, two T's. I like that, I'm going to start using that now. Executive Director, Geneva Park District.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm here to talk about the special use portion of the proposal that's before you tonight. I think that everyone in the room is agree, is in agreement that we are excited about new development and redevelopment. We're excited that it's recharged and that it's, it's getting going again. That helps everyone. What we're troubled about is the application of the land cash ordinance to redevelopment as it seems to be being applied. In looking over the ordinance, well, let me start with this. It's typical in the park district's history that you follow the ordinance as it's written. There isn't a lot of room for interpretation, and we have come across that from time to time, and that can be frustrating, but you have to follow the letter of the law, how the ordinance is written. And in this case, as I've talked about, the ordinance is not written that includes any language in regard to giving credits for existing development. Furthermore, the state statute includes a sentence that says development and redevelopment, and there's no language in the state statute as well about giving credits for existing development. So I don't think that the language exists to make that interpretation. The language used, that we're using, is variance language that is cited not in the dedication of parklands and school sites, but in the design section of the subdivision regulations, which is in Chapter 3. So I think that's a stretch, to stretch, to reach to the design standards that are in another chapter, to use a variance to be applied to not design, but to a contribution of the land cash ordinance. But if we are going to go there, and it seems like we are, and we have done that in the past, then I think that I would like to add some interpretations that I think are important for the alderman to consider in not giving those credits. The first one would be that, as I've stated, I don't think that it's, that there's, it's anywhere in the ordinance. So until we write it in the ordinance that we're going to give credits for such things, then we should do that. And also, we're talking about a planned unit development, and in planned unit development, you can have the developer add additional things that you think are warranted based on impact. So that leads me to my second point, because in this particular development, the impact to the park is going to be exponentially greater than single-family homes and exponentially greater because its location as it relates to this development. We are going to be putting in 30 two- or three-bedroom townhomes with no yards whatsoever. There are some townhouse developments that I've seen that have small courtyards in the back or front, where there is a little bit of private area to perhaps have a picnic or a cookout, or walk your dog, play with your kids. But in this development, the way it's designed, there is no personal space at each of these townhouses. There's 10,000 square feet in the middle, we've talked a lot about that, but, you know, that acreage is explained in square footage. It's not even explained in acreage because 10,000 square feet is about a quarter acre. So I don't think that people want to say there's a quarter acre of open space, but 10,000 square feet sounds like a lot more open space. Consider this, the single-family homes that are there now, you can put a jungle gym or a playset in your backyard. The new development, that will be Wheeler Park. Picnic or barbecue, can do that in your backyard right now. New development, that happens at Wheeler Park. Fenced yard or dog run area, that could be done in a backyard right now. In the future, that will be Wheeler Park, the 57 acres. The list goes on and on. I think I've made my point in regard to where activities are going to be held in the future as opposed to where they are now with this new development. The last thing that I will say in regard to upholding the full contribution to the park and school district is that in the land cash ordinance, the multiplier that is being used for this subdivision is $185,000 per acre. And while that $185,000 per acre is fair in some developments, in the last three redevelopments that we've done in the downtown area, those acres are selling for three times that and more. If you apply that to the formula that we're using for this, the credit that the developer is requesting would go away. So I think that those are really important points to consider. Most importantly, outside of the land, outside of the cash contribution, I think it's really important to always consider green space. You know, the park district's goal in the land cash ordinance is twofold. It hit its impact, but it's also saving an amount per acre, per person, so that we always have a community that is as green as the one that we have now. So I would ask that you, you know, I, again, I would, I would say that we support development and redevelopment, and we're very excited about that. We want to maintain the excellent service that we do and the excellent facilities that we provide to the community, and we need the land cash contribution to do that. I believe I've made some points that are very important and very valid to this argument, and I hope that you take those into consideration moving forward with land cash contributions. Thank you for your time, and I'll take any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're in Row 5. Anyone else? I think we've covered the side of the room, and we have one, one, one other individual that'd like to speak. Come on forward.
My name is Andrea, is Andrea Decoto. I live at 422 Richard Street, and I am...
Familiar name here.
I think so. Maybe over there. Thank you for the opportunity to get up and speak. I always appreciate that. I just wanted to say that I live in the neighborhood. Like Alderman Brown, I drive down Stevens Street twice a day, if not more. I get out in, when I can get out in the morning, go out and run. I'm constantly going down to make my way through the park or down to the river. And except, I don't go down Stevens Street. In the neighborhood, we call it Stevens Street Speedway. And my concern is the traffic. Also, with the addition of the C-tron property, I'm all for the development of everything here, but we need to make sure that the traffic, there's kids in the neighborhood, I see families driving or riding their bikes down Stevens Street to make their way down to the river, as well as the bike path, and it's a big concern with a lot of the development that's going on. It's great that there's development, but you've got to remember that there's families in the area. I'm very concerned about that, because Richards and Stevens, there's a lot of traffic, and they go fast. So thank you very much, appreciate your time. Take care.
Good. I want to thank everyone for being as concise as you were. And your thoughts were well organized, and you were able to express your opinion in under five minutes, all of you, so, well done.
Could I ask a question of David before?
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
David, you know, I was waiting to see if this had come up in a dent, but it looks like we're going to, we're also in this vote is, is for the city to vacate part of the north Second Street, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and is that going to make that a one-way street, or how is that going to go?
It would vacate a portion of the, the parkway.
Okay.
And that would be sold to the developer if this is approved. It has been appraised, and the cost of that appraisal would be reimbursed as well.
So that would still be a two-way street?
It would still be a two-way street with parking.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Would there be available parking on that street then as well?
Yes, on, on Second Street, yes.
Not on North, though.
Not on North Street, right. That's a substandard right away, so it would not be allowed on North Street.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Maybe before we, we field other questions from the, the aldermen, let's give the developers an opportunity at this point, and then I'll get to you, Dorothy, and to you, Alderman Brown. Hello, how are you tonight?
Good. John Lozinski, Oak Creek Capital Partners. They hit that one since it's the freshest one. The right-of-way vacation's actually behind the sidewalk. So from the sidewalk in, you know, curb, parkway, would remain exactly the same.
Okay.
Right now, you have a 80-foot right-of-way where it's typically 60 or 66-foot. And the setbacks actually for those homes are two, three feet versus the 10 we're asking for. It's just how the right-of-way lands.
Okay.
Just to address that comment. I'm going to kind of take these in reverse order. The school, park district issue, yes, we asked for a credit for the nine existing homes that sit there. In 2013, taxes paid in 2014, those nine units paid, and I only did this for the school district, $30,577 to the general fund of the school district, not the retirement fund or nothing out there, with absolutely no demand on the school district. Safe to assume that 2014 taxes paid in 2015 are going to grow, so say $32,000. There'll be zero demand in 2014, an additional $32,000 going to the school districts. So right there, we got about $33,000, $34,000, or $63,000 or $64,000 going to the school district for taxes. So these properties have been paying their fair share for the retirement of debt that the school district has and is funding their operations. We haven't come and asked for our property taxes to be abated because the properties aren't generating children. We thought that was fair, asking for just the units that we were, that were there. My initial request was a simple request, 30 new units minus nine, and treated them all as townhomes. Staff did a much more accurate calculation, and that's where they show the two different numbers, where they show a slight additional value. It is also safe to assume at our average anticipated sales price of $460,000, we are going to generate over $288,000 to the general fund for the school district if the school district keeps their tax rate the exact same as they did in 2013. I don't have future numbers, so that's why I can't project any better than that. So it's safe to say this development is going to increase the taxes received to the school district ninefold. Is it a fair request? I've never had a community that did not consider that a fair request. I had the opportunity early in my career to work on some of the original developments that enabled the state law for the impact fees, school park. And some of those early discussions were, you know, new development tends to be in farm fields, in areas that are not been developed, where they were paying very low taxes to the school or park district. This is not the case in, in this instance. It's kind of unique because there are thrown off so much net taxes to the school district. Again, the school district's coming to the planning commission, they came tonight. I understand their concern, I understand the concern that school funding in the state of Illinois is an embarrassment. But at the same time, what's fair is fair, and that's all we're asking for. Site plan. Before we ever made some middle to, to the city, we met with staff three or four times. We had three or four different concepts of the site plan. And one of our original site plans actually had the townhomes lining up First Street just like the downtown master plan. We closed off the back elevations with another set of townhomes. So we had four buildings or 22 units on the far east of the site. On the west side, we had three, three-unit buildings that would follow the existing R6. We actually had 31 units. It was a very good plan. It stayed under the impervious calculation, which I'll get to in a second, and provided two different housing types. We were, my partner John and I were looking at was for the duplexes to be a ranch duplex with basement, most likely, because they were on the west side of the project, and the great works to the east, they would have been mostly English basements. Staff felt we had a better, more unified site plan with what we ultimately evolved with. And one of the differences is the duplex plan would have had three driveways with cars backing out on the Stevens Street like the existing homes, and we would have had one building facing north and one facing Second. One of the nice things with this product, and this product is similar, the elevations are slightly different, but it's very similar to the muse here in town, very similar to what is on Second Street by the parking garage. Those heights, if you went out there right now, I will guarantee you are as high as we're proposing. It's where you measure heights from. They measure next to the building, not from the curb, not from the sidewalk. So in any case, if you were at the sidewalk in front of those buildings, the peak of the roof, even though it's setback, is going to have the same height differential as we're having. It's just how you measure it. All right? We, one thing that was very important to staff from the very get-go, and we committed to them on it, was the architecture, because we weren't in the historic district, they want us to be complementary to the historic district. And one of our very first elevations, we brought the staff, and staff was very good at reviewing them and coming back with comments in a timely manner, was we're almost too much like the historic district. So we changed it. So we changed it, did a few other changes. But one of the integral parts with this elevation, enforces the height a little bit, is having the porches. After the December 8th Plan Commission meeting, we looked at, okay, how can we reduce the mass scene, particularly along Second Street? And because the grades work, we could use the same building and push the grades down and have the buildings on Second Street basically not have the porches. You just push it down in the ground a little bit, but the natural grade works with you. The feeling, talking with staff, was having a unified community that all the elevations were the same made some sense. If you would like us to eliminate the porches, and we have those elevations drawn, on those two buildings, we can do that. You know, we've never looked at this, here it is, and have not tried to address comments. We tried to address every comment. Between the first Plan Commission and second Plan Commission, I had numerous discussions with staff. I came in and met with staff. We looked at alternative site plans. The one comment Alderman Brown made was on the access point. I can honestly say, we never considered, either myself, my engineers, my planner, or in discussions with staff, about having both accesses on the north. The site plan works that we can do that. You know, we did after the Plan Commission, looked at different site plans that eliminated or minimized the one on Stevens. And it was determined because of the grades, it made sense to leave it where it is. But if the city council would like us to put both accesses on the North Street and eliminate the one to Stevens, that's easy to do. You know, quite frankly, we would even consider working with the property owner on the landscaping, even if we put it on both accesses on the north. It's, again, something, it wasn't the appropriate time to go talk to that gentleman. That gentleman was not at the December or the January 8th Plan Commission. But again, we would be willing to work. We want to be good neighbors. The setback variances, we're kind of in, when we came to staff with our various site plans, staff basically said, we've got a chicken and an egg. Our proposal followed the intent and follows the downtown master plan. But what it did not do is the downtown master plan was prepared that doesn't match your zoning ordinance as in place today. Staff said, we're in the process of updating our zoning ordinance to meet that. Do you want to wait six or nine months for us to get that done? And obviously, that was probably an energetic or aggressive timeline, because I know it's still not done. Because quite frankly, if that was done, we wouldn't be asking for those variances. So we're starting some of those discussions on those zoning ordinance issues a little early, that's all. But again, the setbacks, we are setback. Ms. Anderson loves to talk about her house. Her house is 20 feet from the curb, okay? Our closest point of any house on Stevens Street is going to be 30. And if you looked at that building, it's a four-unit building, we would have two at 30, two proximally at 35, and two roughly at 40. All right, so, because we are stepping the units back, and you saw that, you see that in the plans. We've, we're really trying. You know, can we slide it back a couple more feet? Yeah, we tried to keep the driveways wide, the alleyways wider, so the fire trucks can run around the middle. Comment was made about the parking spot. Most communities, and I've been doing this for over 30 years, always want more parking just to be safe. We can eliminate two sides of the parking and increase that green space. That would be fine, or in some fashion. But we thought having five-plus units parking spaces per unit made some sight, ah, made some sense. Getting a little dry here. And I get to that by, you know, two in the garage, two in the driveway, the 12, and then some onsite opportunities on Second Street. All right? Site plan setbacks, access to north, landscaping, and the right-of-way addressed. And then on the impervious, the way your ordinance is written talks about impervious and drainage. When you interpret it, you say, oh, we meet the letter of law. We'd be in the actual 40%, because we're using the permeable pavers. But then there's another sentence there that somewhat conflicts with the first one, talks about gravel and parking lots. Is our alleyways a parking lot? What we did to be safe, we put it in, asked for the variance. I talked to two attorneys, and they both said they can come up with arguments that's saying we don't need a variance. We're just trying to have everything above board. Here it is. That's all I have for it.
I had a question. You spoke to the school district, but you didn't speak to the park district's concerns. We're talking about no lawn, private area, no personal space, fence, dogs playing catch in the backyard. Don't you feel as though your development will have an impact on Wheeler Park?
We will have some impact on our park, just like any home. Land cash is calculated different for schools and parks. I did not do the calculations for the park district. But as you know, schools and their land cash is calculated based on the number of school-aged children generated.
And just the park-
Parks are generated by the number of total residents. Your school tables are not the most current. They're not even consistent with the 1996 tables. More than likely, your numbers are, that you show in this report are higher than what's going to occur. All right, that's been borne out for you.
Okay, I just, the question was directed in regard to the park.
Yeah, I'm going to get there. So we're saying there's going to be an impact on, you know, total population to this park district, all right? Will people walk to the park? Will they enjoy Wheeler Park across the way? Yes. Will they be, do we need tot lots in a townhome yet? No. I've been involved in a lot of those, and the ones you've put in tot lots because you thought you were going to gear towards a lower, lower price point buyer, they tend to not to use them at all. You know, we see the buyer here, the target market is going to be your move-down buyer or your young professional that's interested in being able to walk to the restaurants in town, walk to the shops, you know, they're going to use the sidewalks. Yes, they will. You know, we do have the area in the back, the Rose Garden area, for green space. You know, we want that to be a gathering space. But will it be a heavy demand for the park district? I would be surprised at that. I live in a totally single-family neighborhood in the area. I know on my street, the demand posted on the park district is next to nothing because the kids are involved in baseball, softball, volleyball, all programs not associated with the park district. Not that it's right or wrong, but I don't believe we're going to have a big demand.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Lozinski? Alderman Semonian?
Thank you, Chairman. John, a couple of questions. If you were to stack rank what's most important to you on these three requested zoning release, the minimum setback, the maximum lot coverage, the maximum building type, what order would you choose?
Oh, that's an interesting one. Well, I'd say three on the lot coverage, because quite frankly, I think that's just an interpretation of a definition, and we're taking a very aggress, you know, we're taking a very cautious approach. Since I don't think we need that. So really, we're talking about two. Height and setback. I'd say setback is number one, because I believe it's consistent with what is the intent of the downtown master plan and what ultimately is going to evolve through the updating of the zoning ordinance with the downtown master plan. In our case, we have the benefit of significant right-of-way on Stevens, and we got a 20-foot parkway before we get the sidewalk. So the back of the sidewalk's 25 feet from the curb. See, our closest house is going to be 35 feet from the curb. You know, so, but I think that'd be number one. The height, again, we're consistent with the muse, the stuff on Second Street. And if we had to eliminate the porches, you know, we could follow the letter of law of your ordinance, you know, which is the 35-foot, which is a standard two-story height. I think our elevations are better with the porches. I think the porches are more in keeping with the downtown, the historic district in town, you know. So quite frankly, I think all three variance requests make a lot of sense when you're trying to create a neighborhood and a community that's going to work well within the neighborhood.
I was part of the rezoning committee, and I know a number of these setbacks and height restrictions and lot coverages are going to change because the way they're set up now, they cannot support our downtown master plan as is. So knowing, knowing what I know, I am in favor of this development. I would recommend a couple of changes, after hearing some of the folks out there and some of my fellow Aldermen, and things like, you know, keeping away from Stevens Street and making both entrances and exits on our North Street. And, you know, I'm, I think the development with the porches is going to be much more attractive than without the porches. So I, I'm in support of this. This is what the city of Geneva spent two or three years on in developing this downtown master plan for density and for our future. And, you know, this is, you know, we have to look to what's in the best interest of Geneva as a whole. And this is in best interest of what Geneva is as a whole. We decided that. This is the direction we all agreed upon. And we can't, although we can make those changes, and although it is a plan, if we're just going to abandon every aspect of this plan every time it comes up, I don't know why we spent all that citizen's time and all the citizen's money to develop the plan. So with all that said, and what I've heard tonight, and what I've read, and what I've investigated, I, I'm in strong support of this. And it's a rare opportunity that we have an opportunity as a city to get a developer that will develop an entire city lot, that gets a city lot, and that can make it uniform like this. And I would, to my fellow citizens of Geneva, be careful what you ask for, because if not this, then what? And what could possibly come in here? And you could be very sorry for what could possibly come in here. So in my opinion, this is a, this is a, this is a great project for the city. And I think the developer, from what I've, what I've heard, is, is willing to work to get some of these issues resolved, and it sounds like to me so. I'm in total support of this. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I believe Alderman Bruno would like to direct a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Credit where credit is due, I was listening to some of the discussions, particularly with the ingress egress and moving driveways off of Stevens Street. There was, there was an important point in the discussion with the Plan Commission. By removing that driveway from Stevens Street, you then move units over there, which will be a visually much more massive front along Stevens Street. As much as I like the idea of getting traffic off of Stevens Street to North Street, which I'm not sure, being a substandard, can we actually exit onto a-
We haven't taken a close look at that, that option.
But anyway, there's, there's something to consider there.
Can I interject just there? When we had that discussion with Plan Commission, we were looking at an alternative site plan. With Alderman Brown suggested that, I didn't think of before, is we don't have to change the site plan because how we access the garages on the north and northeast, we can push that through. I mean, redesign and reconstruct it north, it's going to be a 20-foot wide pavement plus curb. It's going to be like it is now. We're not going to have parking. So two-way traffic, we should have no problems handling that. But what you're talking about is a totally different concept of a site plan that we were picking up and moving. So if we kept the site plan the same and just pushed that driveway out, we could make that work.
Okay, so that would remain green space there?
That would, yeah, we would just close the driveway off to the south and push it to the north.
Thank you. And the, the unit size, if I recall from the packet, they range from, what, 2,100 square feet to 2,600 or 2,700 square feet?
I don't have it with me on some.
Let's run with that.
Yes, that is correct. We do have an option on that basement garage level for a tandem three-car garage, which could affect the livable square footage. Doesn't change what the building actually is.
You know, as we, we spent time with our Homes for a Changing Region, and you envision this as empty nester-type things. I'm, you know, being an empty nester, is that long-term the best saleable size? I personally would want a smaller dwelling myself.
This technically, this really started, and staff heard it. My wife actually looked at one of the houses because she wanted to do a flip. Let's get in there, remodel it, and flip it. This has kind of become her project to a big degree. So some of the design matches hers, and that's about as small as we can get and get all our garbage in the house. And, you know, you talk to a lot of people, I'm in my mid-50s, you know, littlest ones at college. We would like a move-down. Is it your final place? Probably not. It's not trying to be a Del Webbian-type, you know, senior living center. It's someone that's still working, still active, doesn't want to drive home on a Friday after going to the restaurant and having a couple glasses of wine. They want to be in town, enjoy what's nice about walking to, but they still don't want to give up. They have kids coming home from college. You need a couple extra bedrooms. You need some square foot-
A smaller place, the kids wouldn't come home from college.
I would lose that argument. I just have daughters.
Thank you. Alderman Singer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two questions. The first one I'd like to direct towards David. David, is, what, will this be, will this project be incorporated into a special service area?
It would have a backup special service area? Sorry. It would have a backup special service area for the maintenance of the permeable pavers, because that's really the detention for the site, and that would be activated if the association wasn't maintaining it properly.
So there's going to be a homeowners' association?
Correct.
I expect that, yes, I sort of expect of that. And that association, that would be responsible for this, for also a sense of a special service area as well? Is that what, is going to be incorporated into it?
The homeowners' association would be responsible for the maintenance of the site, including the detention facility, which is the permeable pavers, the parking lot, the drive aisles. That's a pretty detailed maintenance plan. If they're not maintaining that properly, we'll have a backup special service area in place that we could activate to levy a tax and then make sure that we're appropriately maintaining that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Flanagan, and then Alderman Cummings.
Can you explain to me, on Second Street, you said they're vacating it. Is there parking on either, both sides?
We're not changing the curb line on Second Street.
I mean, the street itself is not being changed at all?
It's a two, overall, no.
Okay.
And the reason I say that is, part of our development improvements is we're bringing a 10-inch water main that's going to tie to the water main being brought up 30, on First Street, down north, down Second. The intent, staff has us doing it in the street in the right-of-way. As part of, as we were working with that-
Please speak into the mic, please, so we can-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the public is interested in what you have to say.
I'm just sorry, I used to be in loud, Dad. It doesn't matter. So when we do that, engineering, public work staff has asked us actually to remove and replace in the same location the new curb, put new curb in where the old curb is. So are we going to work in it? Are we going to change something out there? Yes, we're going to give you new curb on Second Street on both sides, but it's going to be in the same exact location where it's at.
So are you, are you basically replacing old- So are you, are you basically replacing old, not, what do you call it? Old, help me?
Old curb.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're pulling that curb out.
No, but the sewer, the, the.
Water main.
The water main. You're replacing that whole?
The water main in that area is substandard.
I would assume, yeah.
The city's got a project that we're helping, working with on extending a new ten-inch water main along First Street. We are going to take from the terminus at First Street and north and run a new ten-inch down north and down Second to tie into an existing eight-inch stub at Second, which would give a new loop for that whole block.
Okay.
And then, oops, B-boxes and water services coming into the front of each unit.
Okay.
So it's kind of some urban renewal in terms of public facilities that we're doing in conjunction with.
Commendable.
Long-term planning of the public works and engineering staffs.
Which I think is commendable. So my question was, is there parking on both sides of Second Street? Is my next question?
Today, currently, there is.
It would be one side.
Only one side? Okay, and then you have parking in the center, so between all of the four-point-four on each condo and the twelve in the center, plus on Second Street, because Stevens, you don't park, right?
Stevens and First Street, no parking.
No parking on First Street? And, and north, and north, you're going to change?
Change is going to be, north is going to be no parking.
You're going to take and cordon off that center that's on Stevens?
I misspoke.
Oh.
Stevens Street does allow parking on one side of the street.
Yes.
Stevens Street does allow parking on one side of the street, and that would stay the same. There would be no parking on North Street and First Street.
Gotcha. Okay. And that, that entrance, according to what I'm hearing today, is that it would be more of a U-shape then?
Yeah.
Entrance, in and out, egress and egress. And the center part, the center part that we see is green, is really green area?
Yeah, it's green area. We've got sidewalks, some pavers, and a landscape feature there. It's intended for, you know, passive, green space for the residents, walk your dog, go and relax. You know, we've talked about making some other enhancements in there that would drop residents.
And I can't talk you into taking and removing two of those condos on each side of, on each side of those.
Our plan with all R six had more units.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. As it relates to that, you said the sewer and water main, are you underwriting that entire piece? In other words, would you underwrite the entire piece as, as it relates to those improvements?
We're doing that water main down north, down Second, and then everything onsite.
In other words, you're underwriting all of it?
All that we are doing. The only thing we are working with the staff on, the city has that water main project going down Thirty-One. Because of some timing issues that staff's run into, because you can only work in the park area, we've bid out to build a portion of that for the city, and actually, I believe we got better prices than the city had estimated. So we're going to, you know, we're working on doing three-hundred-foot of water main for the city. But the rest of it is on our dime.
Oh, okay. So in other words, then, the taxpayers that have paid for those improvements, as well as the tax revenues that will be collected into the future from the taxpayers for those improvements, then have already been addressed, so you should be asking for credit, right? Based off of your argument as relates to the school district? Does that make sense?
That makes a lot of sense. I've had communities, I have communities in, particularly in downtown areas, say the same thing. It's six and one-half dozen.
Okay, thank you. Alderman-Cummings?
I, I like the idea, I'm looking at the schematic, the drawing, whatever you guys call it, I, I like the idea of a north exit, entrance and exit and sealing up Stevens. It sounds like that's something that the neighbors would prefer also. One thing I didn't discuss, I didn't mention, and, and overall, some of the tweaks that we've talked about, and, and then I think it's a go. As of right now, I'm not. One thing I am absolutely a proponent of, one hundred percent, is you asking for the credit and you receiving the credit. And I think if you, if a person comes in here and they're tearing down ten houses and they're building ten houses, for us to hit them with a fee when the net impact is zero is outside the intent of the law. And when the law was written, it was for impact. I think if you're tearing down nine, you're putting up Thirty-One, we get the net, you pay the fee.
You get the net, you get Twenty-One.
Yeah, yeah. I am a one-hundred percent in favor of that.
That's what I'm asking for. I'm asking to pay just for the net, new number.
Right.
I'm all, the credits is just for the units that are there. Not anything more.
Right, right. No, that's, I, I think that is well within the intent of what was established in nineteen-seventy-two with Naperville. I think that that's originally what parks and schools wanted. They were worried about facility and open space being reduced per person as populations increased. And, and, and so I like, I like that idea, and absolutely, I'm in support of that.
Alderman-Simonian?
Thank you, Chairman. Regarding the land cash with the school and the park district, I'm a hundred percent in support of what Alderman Cummings just said. And law, no law, I think it's a fairness issue. Softest pillow is a clear conscience, and in my opinion, to not get credit when those units are already paying taxes and they're already contributing to the, to the different districts is, is just, you know, just not right. It's just not fair, and it's taken, you know, more, more bites at the apple than are, than should be allowed. And so I support the city providing credits in these kinds of situations. The law wasn't intended for it, but like I said, law, no law. I believe fairness is the governing factor in, in my decision-making process. So I agree with Alderman Cummings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Let's let Mr. Luzinski wrap up, then. Do you have anything else you want to add?
I only address any questions, staff, you know, we've tried to work with staff from the very beginning. We've tried to be a hundred percent consistent with the downtown plan. And I hope you see, we didn't ask for anything that in some way didn't tie back to that plan. You know, my basic, and John's basic philosophy is, do what's fair, take another step, and take another step, just be fair with everyone, and that's how you get good working relationships.
Very good. I'm, Alderman-Brown?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one little addition to what Ms. Dakota said, which is the history of Stevens Street has a little history that I would remind people. The reason it is a truck route is because I, and previous first ward Alderman, worked with the city traffic engineer, and we worked with Burgess Norton, and we worked with the businesses on Stevens Street. Both Burgess Norton and the business, the industrial area on Stevens Street are somewhat landlocked, except for Stevens to the east. And we had it designated a truck route, and we talked to the business, we talked to Burgess Norton, we talked to the businesses on Stevens that have truck deliveries, and everybody is cooperating in the trucks. And unfortunately for the people who live in that two-block, three-block section of Stevens, the trucks are basically, and now if you look on Google or GPS, you'll see that it's listed as a truck route. So we now have almost never find trucks lost on Ford or Peyton or Fourth Street or Seventh Street or Sixth Street, trying to find out how to get to Burgess Norton or the businesses. So that has worked. But as I say, the consequence is that there is a lot of truck traffic in that first block trying to turn and get on and off of Route Thirty-One. So it's, it's one of these things where a decision made many years ago has consequences today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are you finished?
I'm done.
Okay. Mary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out to the council that if one of the considerations is going to be moving that ingress egress to the north, to North Street, I would like to have the, the fire department weigh in on that. It is a substandard street, it's not a through street. And before making that a condition, I would like to discuss that with them to make sure that they're able to get their, their largest equipment in there and that they don't have any problems with that.
But as in previous cases, if the sidewalk out to Stevens was a side, a landscape sidewalk, it is wide enough, obviously, the way the plan is laid, to accommodate a firecrack. And sometimes they will accept that as a, an emergency egress or ingress if needed. So.
They, they, they may very well do that. They do have a problem oftentimes when there is one entrance in and out.
Certainly understand that.
So having them both on North Street, I would just like to ask their opinion.
Face that on the girls' school development on the east side, big time.
Yes. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. We have two members of the audience like to speak. We have someone over here that hasn't had an opportunity to speak first, and then we'll give you an opportunity after her. If you'd please come forward. That's part of the, the proposition here. Everybody's got to use a mic.
My name is Ellen Bassett, and I live at six oh seven North First Street. And I've become confused on what the variance is being asked for as to the setback, because I came in thinking it was ten feet from the sidewalk, and now you're talking about thirty feet, thirty feet from the curb. And visually, that's, there's a lot of difference. If you're on the sidewalk and you have ten feet to the building, I mean, it's right there in front of you. You're like in the middle of Chicago instead of out in the, it's like the suburbs of Geneva because you're on the outskirts of Geneva there. You're almost in that big town of St. Charles. Anyway, as opposed to twenty feet from the sidewalk and not from the curb, so what is the variance being asked for?
Mr. DeGroot, will you clarify that for?
The variance is from the private side of the sidewalk, so it would be ten feet from the sidewalk to the, to the closest point of the building. When we're talking about from the curb, it's from the pavement of the street. There's twenty feet.
So what was the thirty feet from? That's not from the sidewalk?
No, that's from, from the pavement of the street. It would be thirty feet to the front of the nearest building. So from the sidewalk, it is ten feet.
Okay.
The point is, there is a large boulevard there.
Right. That's the point I was trying to get at.
You don't call it a boulevard, you call it?
Okay. Alderman-Brown?
There is a large parkway.
Alderman-Cummings, we'll take you first, and then we'll, you'll be next.
I had a quick, just one quick question, comment. I think we all need to keep in mind what our preference is on a facade versus the setback. Does someone prefer a very flat facade with a twenty-foot setback or a facade that's offset that has a ten-foot setback? Visually, what's more appealing? A solid wall, and I know what urban, urban developers would say, solid wall or something with some variation. And I'm not looking for answers, I'm just asking for everybody to keep that in mind also for next week.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Thank you, because I just wanted to dovetail on. Because when I was looking at the drawings, ten-foot setbacks only related to the porch element of it, but to the building, to the whole entire building, it's, 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 like you said, it doesn't necessarily have one dimension to it, it staggers. So there's a total difference. Some, some are ten feet, some are, like Mr. DeGroot said, twen, sixteen or seventeen or whatever the case may be. So it's not a solid wall. And I, and I agree with you, I think that that has a better feel to it rather than the urban dark wall look. Is that correct, or am I?
Correct. And if I could, I just wanted to, to build on that point. Part of what staff found in our analysis and the Plan Commission adopted is the finding of fact, was that in addition to that design feature, you don't have any garages in this development facing the street. You don't have any driveways accessing the streets. So that, that kind of forces the buildings closer to the streets, so you can access them from the rear, from the internal, from interior of the block. And we felt with, with the twenty-foot parkway plus that ten-to-twenty-foot setback, that there would be some open space, and it was a favorable design characteristic.
Okay. Ms. Anderson?
I'd just like to respond to a couple of the concerns that the neighborhood has in relation to what Mr. Luzinski has said. It seems like with all the questions that we could all agree that there are enough questions that a decision cannot be made on this, this week, or even next week, that there's obviously a lot of questions. It seems like the density is causing a lot of those questions as well. When we talk about setback, I think it's important that the, the larger parkway is only on Stevens. Am I correct on saying that? There is not a larger parkway on Second, and there's no parkway right now on North. So when we talk about that extra ten feet of parkway on Stevens, that only exists on the Stevens side. It doesn't apply to Second Street or North Street. There's the concern about the parking. What we are nervous about is all the cars lined up parking along Stevens. When cars do park on Stevens, it almost turns Stevens into one-way traffic there. Cars have to pull to the side and wait while other cars go by. It also, particularly where the trucks are turning in, if cars are parked along Stevens close to Thirty-One, it makes it very difficult for trucks to turn in there. And with there being no parking on Thirty-One or North Street, that means that you'll have quite a bit of parking on Second Street and Stevens. And that's due to the density. It's not necessarily due to the plan, the design, the amount of guest parking spots in the inside. The, the problem with parking there will be due to the density. We also need to consider that the way that these are designed is if you do pull into your driveway, you're going up a full flight of stairs with groceries, which young mothers don't want to do, which people in their past retirement age don't want to do. And so you're going to have people parking in front of their own home on the Stevens side and, on, on the street in order to get in easier with groceries. The other issue is that there is no entrance to these units from the back. So even if they are parking like in their driveway or in those guest spots, they would have to either walk around to knock on the front door of the guests that they're visiting, or they'd have to have that person come down into the garage and open up a garage door to let them in. There's no back door for a guest to go in from the interior of the, of the block. So those issues are just, the, the parking causes a concern for us, and, and the density is what leads to that concern. I also just want to bring up that because we don't feel like these will be long-term residents, we want to make sure that thoughtful consideration is made on the design and that the resale value holds up in these, because there will be a high turnaround. For thirty units, when we're talking about people with families are not going to want to stay in these most likely. First-time homebuyers would have a hard time spending this much to buy a home. And then as people get older, they're not going to want to go up three full flights of stairs to get to their bedroom. And particularly that full flight of stairs with groceries is, so with the high turnaround and these going up for sale, we want to make sure that they hold their value, particularly since we know we want to stay in our homes forever in the historic district. Another thing I would just like to mention is, David did pull some information up for me about the height of some of the most recent townhomes that have been developed, and the ones on South and Second Street are thirty-five feet high, which is in accordance with the R six code. So none of the new developments are as high as thirty-eight-ten. Is that correct, David?
The townhomes at Second and South Street, from the front facade to the peak building height are thirty-five feet. From the rear towards the garage, it probably adds another two feet or so. But we measure from that front facade.
And so these are thirty-eight-ten measured from the front facade? So they're taller than any of the more recent buildings. The other thing I just want to mention is, Mr. Luzinski's comment about my home only being twenty feet from the street. When my home was built a hundred and twenty years ago, the, the street was not there. So I could argue that the city has imposed on my own setback in my yard. So there's, there's not much we could do about that. We wish we had more space there, particularly for a sidewalk. There are not sidewalks in some sections of our neighborhood there, and so you have actually elementary school students who walk on Stevens Street to get to their bus stop. We are a bus stop corner at Second and Stevens, and because there is no sidewalk on that section of Stevens Street, the elementary school students do have to walk in the street to get, when there's snow in our yard, they, that family has a young infant in a stroller, so they do have to go out into Stevens Street to walk into the yard of the bus stop. And so again, the, the traffic and the parking issues that are going to occur because of the density of this development concern us, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just let me clarify that parking, because facts get lost. There are four parking spaces per unit, two in the driveways, two in the garages. Got twelve spaces around the island. Second Street, you can put fourteen spaces. It's a hundred and forty-six parking spaces without a car on Stevens. It's 146 parking spaces without a car on Stevens Street. That's 4.9 parking spaces per unit with nothing on Stevens Street. I would venture to say there's not many businesses, homes in the historic district or the older part of town that comes close to that type of number.
We have, uh, yes, if you want to say something yet?
I have just a question for Mr.- I had a question for Mr. DeGroot, or anybody here that might know. How tall is, what's the elevation of the muse? There's been a lot of comparison between the muse and this unit, and to me, I know it's way above my head, but it just seems like if there's, there's a big difference between them, if you know that.
I, I did look in our files, and I was not able to find the elevations for the muse, so I don't know the exact building height. I could tell you that the unit sizes are the same dimensions, they're 24 feet wide, 24 feet wide and 45 feet deep. Uh, what's being proposed tonight is 24 by 35 to 45. And the muse is set back 20 feet from, from the sidewalk, but there, the parkways only a few feet on the other side of the, on the public side of the sidewalk.
Is there anything to find out? Does this city have any record of limits to this?
I wa, I wasn't able to find those records.
Most likely, they follow code, which would be 35 feet, is that correct?
Assuming they follow code, it would be 35 feet, but, um, they look, to me, they look to be taller than what's at South and Second.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we got one more here.
I'm Paul Zander, 121 Ford Street, and I could reiterate the well-reasoned arguments on my neighbors, but you've heard them all. I've been to two committees of the whole in the past six months, talking to developers, and in both of those meetings, the developers threatened the council with, "I could make this worse." I think that the council should start thinking about that, and should really draw it together, and say, "We're not gonna let a developer ever threaten us, and we deny anything for a developer who threatened the council with something worse," if you don't agree with me. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Simoni?
Can we make Stevens Street, in this block, no parking?
I think that's, uh, I think that's committee work, isn't it? I don't know if we're gonna be-
Yeah, that, I mean, that, um, no parking is usually passed by ordinance through the police department, so we'd have to review it with them.
I'm just asking if it's an option.
If I might, it would be, it would be separate ordinance on that. It could be in conjunction with this, but it would be a separate ordinance and apart from this.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Cummings?
I'll pass.
Okay. Okay, I also received, uh, we all received a letter from Daniel Horvath, and, uh, he wrote a nice letter, and, uh, I would suggest that we allow that to go into the record as well for this evening. Alderman Brunel?
Uh, just, uh, on that, on that last point, I've, I've watched the Plan Commission meetings, and I, uh, I, I, I do think this developer has worked in good faith with the city, and I, I wouldn't interpret, just be, when we discuss code of what could be built, uh, I, I think it's, might be a little unfair to con, to consider that threatening. I think they worked in good faith with, with city staff. Thank you.
Okay. Then Alderman Cummings?
Then I will jump in. I felt, at no point did I feel threatened, at no point did I. I, I need to hear feedback from the developers on what can and can't be done. I didn't feel threatened, in a, even a bit.
I'd like to call a question.
Uh, I believe Alderman Simoni had his hand up and, uh, has one last question or comment.
Well, I'd like to, I, I would, I'd like to move to table this, uh, to the next COW meeting, until we can get some of these answers, and, um, and city staff can work with the develop. I know it's a time issue, but, uh, you know, 100% of nothing is nothing. So, uh, I think in, in good faith that we should table this for two weeks, uh, put it back on the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to table, is there a second? By Maladra. Okay. Uh, no discussion, uh, read the roll. Motion to table, is what we're voting on, up or down?
Date certain, February 9th.
We need a date certain.
Date certain to-
Monday, the 9th?
Yes.
Does everyone understand, uh-
Yeah.
The motion to table? Okay.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
9-1.
Okay. Uh, motion to table, so, uh, that essentially concludes, uh, our discussion this evening on item 4F. I want to thank everyone that, uh, attended this evening's meeting, and, uh, all of your input was appreciated. Item five, new business. Under new business, uh, before everyone gets away, there'll be two special committee meetings that'll be coming up on Wednesday, this Wednesday evening, February 4th. This relates to the, uh, the, the road diet or road reconfiguration on 31. There'll also be a, uh, I'm sorry, there'll be a meeting on this Wednesday, January 28th, at 7:00 PM at Public Works, and there'll also be a meeting, a like-meeting on Wednesday, February 4th at 7:00 PM at Public Works, on the same topic, same agenda. Okay, uh, anything else that anyone would like to bring forward as it relates to new business? If not, uh-
Mary, Mary has a question.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mary?
Sorry. Um, in addition, I was gonna mention the, the road diet meetings, both on the 28th and the 4th, seeking public comment. We are setting up a webpage as well, with a public comment form on there that folks can use as well for that. Also wanted to mention that, um, knock on wood, if everything goes well the rest of this week, uh, the parking deck will be open next week for business on the lower two levels. Uh, the third level will not be opened until better weather, when we can seal it and stripe it, and we'll finish the landscaping around the outside at that time, so, but at this point in time, we will have the shuttle running on Monday as well, uh, but it should be open Sunday, the 1st, um, for those two level, levels. Again, if all goes well, uh, with our walkthrough on Thursday, but we will still have the shuttle and the temporary parking lot open on Monday for folks to use. Also wanted to, uh, to ask the council, uh, I've been in touch with the Humane Society relative to the coyote discussion. They are, I'm working with them to try to schedule some training for our police officers as well as public, um, training session on dealing with coyotes. Uh, I am looking into the management plan that Chief Mexon referenced, as far as Riverside adopting, and if the council is in agreement, um, I will work on that and bring that back so that we've got a written management plan that can be formally adopted by the council. Unless I hear an objection, I'll assume that the consensus is to move forward and, and bring that back. That's all, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded by Marx, seconded by Singer. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned.